First order of business, if I can ask everybody to please rise. Councilman Kevin Moon will give the implication and remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Our dear Father, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you've given this town and all that you've done for us, Lord. We thank you for everything. Lord, please be with us during this virus and please help us define a cure and take care of this virus, Lord, so we won't have to be impacted by it anymore. Be with this council, Lord, as we go through the decisions to make them based on what you feel we should do, Lord. Lead, guide, and direct us in all that we do in your heavenly name. We pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Moon. Okay, we're going to go right back into the mayor's comments that she was making at the work session. Do you want to complete this or do you have another report to give or how would you like to handle that?
I do have a mayor report.
Okay. Do you want to give the mayor's report and then get back into this discussion?
Sure.
It might be more, a better continuum if we do it that way.
Many citizens have been questioning when we're going to open up city facilities and parks. Governor Ivy is maintaining the stay-at-home order through April 30th. As far as I know, of course, I just got an email that she will be having a press conference tomorrow morning at 11:00. As a city, we must follow state order and we will continue to follow the state guidance right now. When she does decide, the city has put together a phased plan for reopening our parks and recreation amenities to go over with council, as well as City Hall and the Public Works Building. The State Task Force for Reopening Alabama presented a phased plan as well, and the dates that they use would be the dates that we would use as a city. And we're not talking about business. This is just for city facilities. So I think that if it's good with y'all, we take the state's lead on that. I have been trying to get numbers by zip code for COVID-19 confirmed cases. I was able to obtain a figure a week ago that the city of Fairhope had 23 confirmed cases, which made Fairhope the leading city in the county for confirmed cases. At that time, for the county, it was 116. Since yesterday, confirmed cases have gone up 34% in the county since that number was given to me. The data needs to be transparent and available for all to see. I should not feel as if I'm trying to obtain top-secret information, which is how I am feeling right now. The fact that people I'm reaching out to have been discouraged to share this information is something that is concerning and I want to get to the bottom of. It needs to be, you know, so everybody can give database decisions. We're going to go into the marketing rebounds. I don't have to mention that or summarize that. Street closures. The closure on Ingleside will be approximately another three to four weeks. We put the notice out last week that it would be up to four weeks. The contractor will be doing the final tie-in for this project once the materials are in place. We had to do some digging in the area to field, verify the materials needed. Section Street will be hopefully open at the end of next week with a temporary patch. It will need to be closed back in the future, again, for a few days when we schedule to come back in and replace all the asphalt at one time. The crosswalk in front of the City Hall is currently not working and the contractor has been notified and coming out to fix it. The Eastern Shore Chamber Prayer Breakfast, it's an annual deal they do at the Daphne Civic Center on National Day of Prayer, will be held on May 7th virtually. So everybody can tune into this because it usually is a ticketed event where around 550 people come out, but it will be available for everybody. Thomas Hospital has been doing really well through this whole process for the last couple of months. They are planning a phased reopening for elective surgeries, which that's how the hospital's able to say it stay afloat. I mean, if it was just emergencies and all of the things that they're doing right now, they wouldn't be able to sustain financially. These patients will, of course, be tested for COVID before being admitted to the hospital. And I will end with exciting news, that after waiting three and a half years, two more restore-funded projects I proposed in 2017 have been awarded. In the midst of so much uncertainty, having the definitive award letter for such positive projects finally coming to fruition brings us so much to be grateful for. The two of the three priorities that have been the focus of this administration are sewer upgrades and a plan for responsible growth. We received $650,000 to go towards a comprehensive land use plan, which will be comprehensive in nature, public vision-driven, integrated with public utilities and services, will consider environmental sensitivities, will be data-driven, and kept up-to-date to provide a blueprint for our future. Also, we received $10 million to go towards upgrading and rehabilitating our sewer system. We have not been waiting on this money to start, though. We have the five-year planned project for the complete sewer upgrade started in 2018. The $6.2 million Working Waterfront project, we discussed, if people would look back on the work session today, there was an update given on that. I'm incredibly proud of this administration for staying the course and staying focused on the ultimate goals this term: utility upgrades, a self-sustaining budget, and implementing plans for responsible growth. There were complex, big goals and were clearly defined in the beginning. The results speak for themselves. I'm excited, grateful, and confident in Fairhope's future. And that's all I have for the mayor report, and we're going to segue into continuing my proposal for a large-scale rebound marketing plan that will help our small businesses recoup losses, hopefully, in some cases, help save businesses from closing their doors. And in turn, this will also help the city recoup. We have, most of our operating budget is covered by our sales tax income. So I've already gone over kind of asking how much we would ask for, and that's kind of still unknown because we'll get more information, I think, when we reach out to professional services. I would like to support Hatch annually with a $20,000 appropriation. We want to see them, you know, be successful long-term and being able to count on money to budget long-term is something that we do for other organizations and assets in the city. The $20,000 AMEA grant that the city receives from buying power from our co-op is to be used for economic development, and I think it's more appropriate to use it for all businesses if we can and supporting, at least putting that towards going through this effort of the rebound. Also proposed, and some income that has been proposed in the last budget, to go over it again, it is the fact that the city does not have a gas tax right now. Every other city in the county has a gas tax, and if the average gas tax is 2%. I'm proposing that we, for the first time, put in a 1% sales tax. This is not going to be something where consumers feel like they're going to have an increase in their budget. It is a price that would be absorbed by the gas stations because they have to remain competitive. The price that you see when you go to a gas station includes everything, and they do compete with Daphne and other cities that are charging the exact same thing. The other proposal in the, in sales tax would be increasing lodging tax to 7%, which is what I recommended over a year ago. It is the average of what the cities in Baldwin County charge, and we were at 4% before. The approval was for 6%, but in the argument, I think, was not wanting to be the highest lodging tax, which we're not. I mean, that's unfounded. This is not only right in line with all of our neighbors, but it is a tax that visitors expect to pay. In fact, I don't think they, they look at it and even question it, but it's not, not a high, we're not asking for anything higher than normal. I do think with this 1% lodging, long-term, a portion of it, I think, should go into economic development so we can continue to support the businesses and hotels that are here and attract the visitors that make up a big portion of our operating budget. By supporting them, we are also investing in the city of Fairhope. And as far as the amount, what I've put together so far is about $65,000. I think that's a very, very low reasonable amount. Again, my business spends around $50,000 a year for one business, and the city's operating budget is about 22 times mine. So to get the over $10 million that we have, you know, for our operating budget, it's worth investing a little to, to help support them and, and help the city as well. I did mention that we have Downtown Business Association, and they have, they serve a great purpose. It's a member-based, and they concentrate on a lot of the things downtown, which is great. And the Eastern Shore Chamber is a huge asset to Fairhope, but it is for the whole Eastern Shore, not specifically Fairhope. This, we want a comprehensive plan to support all business in Fairhope, and their success is our city's success. So that's the bulk of it. And then I wanted to ask y'all how we can go about this, knowing that the businesses are likely going to open next month, and the approval process has to have its process. And I just want to try to expedite something, at least promoting to the locals as soon as possible. And then when it's the right time to do tourism and possibly piggyback on what Gulf Shores and Orange Beach are doing, we'll know when that time is right, when it's safe, and then, you know, advertise and budget for that.
You rest?
Yeah.
Okay. Y'all want to do, you want to go down the roll here or random?
Sure.
Councilman Robinson, do you want to lead off or somebody else?
Yeah, yeah, I don't mind. Yeah, I mean, I think, Mayor, I told you this, sorry, Michael. I told you this today, I think everybody would, and I hesitate to use the term "everybody" because I don't speak for everybody, but I assume that most would be in favor of, of doing something to boost our local economy in any way that we can, within reason. You know, what I struggle with in this is exactly the best way to do that and the appropriate time to do that. As to, when I say, when I say appropriate time, I mean, when it would be the most impactful for our local economy. If the governor opens up businesses on May 1st, or I guess it's, I think it's technically Thursday, assuming there's no additional action, it'd be Thursday at 5:00 PM maybe. You know, I would expect the large majority of patrons of our local establishments would only be locals. I don't foresee a sudden burst of tourism in the near future. But I guess that's one of the things, we'll just have to see how that progresses over the next month or several months. And that's, that plays into when it would be appropriate to do sort of a bigger scale.
Right.
Not just what that would be, but when it should be. But I'm more interested, I guess, in the short term, is figuring out a way to maybe discuss letting locals know that we're back open locally, which I think, based on what I saw this weekend, kind of the discussions that I've had, is people are out and they're getting out, and if they can go somewhere and have somewhere to go, I think that will take care of itself in, in a large part because people are just so tired of being stuck at But any, you know, ways that we can, can boost that, I'd definitely be willing to listen, but I just, I don't know what those answers are right now, and I guess I'm just looking for some.
Let me, let me answer that. This is, you know, the first phase will be about rerouting online sales to local merchants and local business and some of the, the big box stores that probably have not really been down. You know, that they were allowed to stay open, a lot of the things they sell directly compete with a lot of the stores that were forced to close. So there is a lot to make up, and we really shouldn't wait months to figure out, you know, how everybody's going to pan out because they're going to need a lot more help initially. And we put together a website for, it's trying to get a comprehensive list together of all businesses in Fairhope. It really doesn't matter if it's a storefront. We want all, all businesses because this will kind of segue into a long-term support for, we don't have a Fairhope Chamber, you know, and we don't have a business association that truly is for all business. So until we have that or a way to partner, you know, I don't want to wait for that because whatever we invest right now, we're investing for the city. I mean, we're going to benefit from it. So rerouting, trying to drive all the reasons why it's so important to keep a portion of your dollars locally is, is an ongoing effort, but now it is really, really critical. And it could be a decision as simple as, you know, just, just spending $100 a month a little differently, you know? And all of that ties into a campaign that I'm not going to be, I'm going to let the professionals do it, you know? But there are ways to influence those decisions. I think a perfect example is in, during the holidays, the Small Business Saturday. That started out a long time ago with American Express with just a handful of small businesses. And now it's a big, it's a big deal, you know? So whatever we do now, I think will get better and better. But the example of the fact that we don't spend any money on all local business, I think is a missing gap and something that we need to, to really look at.
Councilman Conyers?
I'm definitely in favor of some type of a marketing plan to support, support our local businesses. I think what I'm envisioning is maybe more along the lines of, and we talked about that earlier, kind of what happened with BP and Gulf Shores after the oil spill where, and that was really, you know, a blessing for that area because they were already suffering from the financial crisis in, in the midst of all that, and that really brought that area back was that, that advertising money spent by BP, but, and they certainly needed to. That was, that was the least they could do. I'm not so sure about the, the local because I think what, what I heard you say, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, but when you're saying redirecting some of those dollars from some of the big box stores, that sounds like that kind of falls in the wheelhouse of what the downtown merchants are already doing, and, and that would go against sort of a larger plan of just promoting all of Fairhope locally because I'm picturing, you know, Walmart and some of those places being some of those larger stores that have benefited from some of the smaller stores being closed. So I'm seeing more of a marketing to bring tourists in when the timing is right. But locally, I feel like maybe just a word of mouth, almost, I don't know that you have to.
We already do that, but.
Well, I don't think we're going to be.
I just want to explain one, one thing about the small business. When small businesses do better, the chains do better. And, and almost everything. It starts, though, with a healthy small business, and it really is the foundation of any very strong economy. And I can tell you right now, all the large, you know, big box stores and whatnot, they know that. I mean, there's no question, they know more about the economics of small business, and anything that we do in that arena is absolutely going to increase everybody. All boats will be lifted. And it wouldn't be, I don't think, you know, if I'm saying something a certain way, it is for all business, you know? But there are many, many, many cities that, that help start Main Street programs, and it's really no different than this. I think ours is going to be a little bit broader. But cities with, with businesses that, where they live here, their business is here, their, all of their professional services are done here, I mean, there is a value of that kind of reinvesting up to four times more, you know? There's data behind that. So the chains totally understand that, and they will never be left out. They just, they're going to get it regardless.
Well, and I guess what I'm saying is more of a, if we have a system that will kind of handle the local, in my mind, the downtown merchants are already promoting the downtown Fairhope area, is it better to, for that portion of the marketing plan to get behind them and their program or get with them on their program rather than to have two competing ideas that are running side by side? I guess that's all I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I, I hope that we can agree that all small business in Fairhope is important.
Yes.
And that's, that's really what it's about. I mean, we have thousands, and they have a membership of 100. I'm in, I'm in it, and I pay it and I support it, and my dad started it, started the Downtown Business Association. There is value. I absolutely support it. This is a bigger scale, you know, about Fairhope and all the businesses that make up Fairhope. It is different. If we had a, a city chamber, we wouldn't need this. Or we could have a better partnership in doing something in addition to what the chamber does.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with most of what has been said, and I think Jimmy brings up one of my, one of my concerns as well, is competing with the downtown, and I understand what you're saying, there's more than just the downtown small businesses. But however, also feel while we might not directly have an advertising campaign for business in Fairhope, we do spend probably over half a million dollars on flowers and tree lights that is indirect marketing for our city. And to Jay's point about the timing, you know, I think that's going to be really, the people are going to be the ones that determine, you know, when they feel safe getting back out. So as far as the marketing of when that is, and then also, we just signed another contract with a marketing company for advertising at the beach, right?
That is part of what we give the downtown merchants. Is that Visitors Guide? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I thought, I thought there was a, we just signed the second year on a, a contract for.
It's distributing that. So, and I think that's what we do for that brochure, is we've added Visiting Fairhope, but the meat of it is the same thing that they would do on their own. In other words, it's advertising the businesses that are members and things like that. And it's, I think it's, it's great, but we want it to go out to a lot of people, and so, you know, printing that, which the city has contributed to printing before, now we just have more places to distribute it. And I've, Gulf Shores has agreed to put it in their visitors' area, too. I mean, some of it competes with what they do, but they have agreed to put it there. I mean, we want to look at everything. Like I said, this is, I'm not going to be asking for a lot of money for the many, you know, there's tons and tons of business in Fairhope, and it's going to a good, good cause.
And then lastly, you know, as far as adding another appropriation, we, you know, one of the tasks that I feel we've done unfortunately is try to cut back on appropriations from the city budget.
Do you think it's fair to go to an operating account for Hatch? I support Hatch. Then to go to supporting local business? I mean, that, that's all I'm saying, is that I think the economic money that we get, it's not much, it's $20,000 for economic development, is better served by helping our small business because we can take that, a lot can go, a little can go a long way. To support an operating budget for Hatch should be an appropriation, and I think that, you know, if you asked Lee Lawson, he would feel better, too, because that is a long-term thing. Not every council in the future is going to agree, or mayor is going to agree, that that $20,000 grant should go to them, and they want to be able to rely on that long-term. So.
Councilman Moon?
I'm just kind of looking at the, the numbers and thinking, shopping local is a great idea. I think, and considering the last five years, I think it's been done pretty well in the fact that we've increased the sales tax by 7.2% over the last years and we can't find a parking spot downtown Fairhope.
Just because you can't find a parking space means something.
Obviously, today, that's not the case scenario, but I feel that once this is turned, you know, once we get back to what I consider a normal activity, you're not going to have the problems you obviously have now. And I'm, I'm trying to see, you know, what more you want to do. I mean, basically, let's just say, let's assume we put a marketing plan out there and you have 5,000, 100,000 people show up here. Where are you going to put them?
That's not how it works, but I mean, that's, you know.
The point of it is, you, you want to increase, and I'm not saying we don't want to increase. I'm just saying that I feel under the present plans that we have, you get a 7.2% every year of an increase under the present plan.
And we've done a lot of, you know, making sure that all marketing that we do internally includes that, but we also, this was unexpected, and I think to just say, small business, y'all can take care of yourselves, you've done it in the past, and good luck. I just don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think the city should try to do what we can.
That's not what I'm saying is good luck. That's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is, I, I feel that once you open, once you're able to open the stores up, I think a lot of this problem is going to go away. Once the stores are open, I mean, you got, my wife's ready to go tomorrow or yesterday. And unfortunately, you just can't.
So do you think this marketing effort?
I think once the stores get open, you're not going to have that problem anymore.
But do you think this marketing effort would hurt anything?
No, I don't think it would. My problem I really have with spending any money towards something under that scenario is I don't know how much good it's going to do, but I know it won't hurt anything, is at this present time, I'd like to hold off on that because of the situation the city's also in.
Right. Which is why I'm proposing more revenue to pay for that and more. I already know how marketing works because I've been in business for over 20 years, and I know how PR and advertising affects my business. I mean, I wouldn't continue to do it unless it did that, and what I'm pretty much proposing is what I spend on my business. I mean, it's not, it's very, very little that I think would pay back tenfold, and you can ask any small business right now if they would like the city's help in trying to promote and get more local shopping locally, when it's safe, visitors coming. I think most, all of them would say yes. I would love that.
All right. I'm going to try to take all your, all your proposal, Mayor, and I'm going to go through a lot of this point by point, if you don't mind. First, let me say that, you know, I would like to see more of the, you know, how. I've heard the why, I want to know more of the how and what, you know, what is going to be the return. To Kevin's point is that until we open up the businesses, we don't know what the long-term effect is going to be, and, and there's going to be some natural lack of tourism, you know, having some, some property at the beaches. People have counted all the way out into late July and early August, and so there's going to be a time in which people, and maybe when things open up, you know, people will bounce back. I think that because people have lost income for.
I think that because people have lost income for, you know, a month or so, and it may be extended, people have lost income, and they don't have disposable income, so there's gonna be a lag in, in sales. It's natural that no amount of advertising is gonna bring back, because people don't have it. But there's also gonna be a natural rebound when things open up, which Kevin was alluded to. I want to put into perspective where we're at now. And this is based on the numbers that our treasurer gave us. If you look at the revenues through last Friday, the sales tax revenues, they were down 11% compared to FY 2019's. She stated in her email, 10%, I calculated, you know, 10, 11. But guess what, folks? That was April the 24th. You got six days left in April. You got 20% of the month left, and we were down 11% from last year.
It was comparing days, the same days, up to the same days at each month.
Okay, so it was only through 24 days of last year?
Month, yes.
Okay. All right, then in worst case, then we were down 11%. So I'll use that, we're down 11%. And it could get worse. We'll see. I don't wanna paint too rosy of a picture and be too optimistic, but it could get worse. It could be 20%. I'm looking at February numbers, we had a 19% increase in February, over, year over year. So I guess, you know, I haven't seen enough details as to what we were gonna be doing, where the money's gonna be going, and what the anticipated return on investment is. But I'm not closing the door on that. I'm not closing the door on wanting to spend money to attract, to attract business and more sales. But I haven't seen enough to convince me right now. As far as the AMEA money goes, we could use the AMEA money, we could use money out of the general fund. We know that AMEA money is a fit, so as long as we have that grant, it's really easy, we've approved it for Hatch before. We could do an appropriation out of the general fund, and then we could use the AMEA grant money for something else. It's, to me, six and one, half and a dozen the other, it's not worth arguing over whether we take the AMEA money. It's quite simply, I would want to, as the mayor said, she wants to support Hatch, I wanna continue to support Hatch. We already have that vehicle in place. I would propose we continue to keep that vehicle in place. I have talked to Lee Lawson, I actually did call Lee Lawson, and he said that he is dependent upon that money. So whether we take it out of general fund or AMEA, it's six and one, half and a dozen the other, it's the City of Fairhope's money. It makes no difference. So I would say continue to take the AMEA money and put it towards Hatch. And if we were to be convinced to put in a marketing plan, we can take that from the general fund. It makes no difference. However, proposing an increase in lodging tax, I'm not, I'm not a tax-and-spend kinda guy. I like keeping our taxes low. We didn't wanna be the highest in the county at 7%. We kept it that way for a reason. We did go up, and our lodging taxes increased. They are down significantly over the previous month last year, or the same month last year. But if you go back to the 2018 numbers for the lodging tax, they're off by about $5,000. In fact, almost exactly $5,000. So we're back to a 2018 level. And I'm not saying that's good, but what I'm saying is, you know, to, to solve this problem by increasing a lodging tax, and I'll go ahead and throw the gas tax in, that's something I think we could study. I'm not really in favor of adding more taxes. We were doing very well with our budget, and I think that we can do it by controlling our, our spending. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of a, of a tax. And I didn't hear anybody else comment on that, so I don't know where council stands on that. So for me, I would give the AMEA money to Hatch, I would listen to the, the how, and what the ROI is for an expenditure that we would, I would propose taking out of the general fund. And I'm not in favor of the, of the two, the two taxes. That's kind of mine.
I think you need to speak to the voters, too, 'cause they don't care at all about an increased lodging tax that is in line with every other city. They'd rather have that happen than it come out of their pocket somehow.
Oh, well, you know, actually, actually, Mayor, I'm thanking, thank you for, I actually forgot to bring up something extremely important. If this trend was continued, to continue, we're down, and once again, we haven't counted all of April, I still, I'm gonna verify that, but if we have, we're down 11%. We're down about $150,000 in April. We have a $7 million rainy day fund in this city. If this is not a rainy day, I don't know what is a rainy day. I don't wanna implement a tax. When we have a rainy day fund for this express purpose, that I believe, unless things really go to hell in a handbag, we would get through this with our rainy day fund. I think that we could make up our, our budget deficits with that. Now, that could change in a month. I don't think it'll change in a week, but that could change in a month or two. But I don't, I don't, I don't see it. I see things getting better, not worse.
I think that this will be communicated and taken very negatively, I really do. Because you're basically saying no to supporting our economy, that you're fine with taking the rainy day fund, which we don't even have enough, we need to increase that, much less consider taking it. I mean, y'all are considering it for the purchase of the parkland, which is absurd. We, I mean, to look at this, we have to look at ways to do better, and it just seems like you're always fine with the status quo. And if I took it, you know, everything that I did this term as the status quo, we wouldn't be self-sufficient today as a city. I mean, we have to always look at how we can do better. To say that you don't wanna be known as a high tax for lodging, there's not a city in the country that's ever said that. It doesn't make sense.
I don't wanna tax the people anymore right now. I didn't hear anybody.
These are visitors. These are visitors that are paying it anywhere else they stay. Most would think that they would pay more for it in Fairhope. But I'm asking for just the same as everybody else, an average. I mean, it's just money being left on the table.
Counsel, what are your desires? Would you like to take action on this tonight? I believe that the clerk may have a resolution prepared.
I'm not ready to take action, and I'll say something else that, you know, whether for or against the tax, if we increase the lodging tax and implement a gas tax, all we're gonna do next budget cycle is you're gonna look at that as more revenue, and you're gonna increase your spending because you have more revenue, and then you're gonna come to another situation like this, or an economic downturn, and your revenues are gonna go down, and you're gonna have to make more cuts. So that's just my, the taxing spin theory.
Are you fine with the City of Fairhope being the only city in the county, and probably anywhere, that doesn't have a city gas tax? I mean, you're just giving it to the gas station. They have the same prices as Daphne.
I started with a preface, whether you're for or against it, I just said that's another thought process behind the consideration.
I just mean, this is, I'm speaking from a business standpoint. Having the same average lodging tax, when we're a city that is one of the most desirable cities in the country to visit, why would you leave that money on the table? It makes no sense whatsoever. This is a very easy way to make a little bit more money and have it earmarked for economic development, since you're opposed to supporting economic development.
Nobody said they were opposed. I didn't hear one person say they were opposed to economic development, Mayor.
Everything I've ever put in the economic development budget has been cut routinely every single year this term. So I, I have to say that y'all don't support economic development. At least you don't financially.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Counsel, does anybody wanna amend the agenda to add a resolution?
I don't know about amending the agenda, but I would like to see maybe a small market plan for at least our local marketing ideas, so that we can at least consider that, consider funding a local marketing campaign.
The how and the ROI that I had asked for as well?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know that we can necessarily.
As opposed to being opposed to it, I ask for that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I don't, well, I don't know that we can formulate an ROI at this point, 'cause we don't know it necessarily how, what the world's gonna look like in a month. It definitely looks different than it did a month ago.
Well, if we're not gonna predict an ROI, then, well, boy.
Well, I'm just, my thought is, you know, just giving the money without a plan is putting the cart before the horse. We need to see what the plan is, to see if it's worth the monetary support, is my.
And I'd say I'm in favor of, of spending some, some money towards a marketing plan for, in my mind, more of a regional, trying to bring tourists in, but we just don't know. I think now's the time to create that plan, I just don't think we can launch it until we have a better comfort level with.
I said that part wouldn't be launched, but I mean, I also don't wanna come back, especially when I think you're adverse to investing money in economic development every time we need more. I'd rather say not to exceed this, and then come for, and show what we're gonna be doing. It's gonna be a fluid decision, because we don't know what each week is gonna bring. But to say that you don't wanna spend any money, 'cause I don't know if it's gonna do anything, I mean, it's just, I'm telling you, it's, it's not the way to do it. It really isn't. I mean, I'm a businessperson, I've been doing this a long time. It just blows my mind, 'cause it absolutely does work.
All right, counsel, we're gonna move to, unless somebody wants to make a resolution, or a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution, we're gonna move to council comments. And I would ask the council.
Council President, you need to approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, clerk. Yeah, we missed that earlier. Okay, I'd like to ask you if you have any changes, additions, deletions to the minutes of the regular city council meeting and the agenda meeting, which were held on the 13th of April? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes submitted.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Now, council comments, one of the things that we, we need to consider is, we have, we had closed parks with recreation equipment, or playground equipment, I'm sorry. We have closed the North Beach Park, and we have closed the pier. So I would like to hear from you, if you would like to, we can do this after comments, or you can incorporate that during your council comments, but I think the time's upon us to be thinking, do we wanna just, do we just wanna let that roll over into next month? Do we want to start talking about lifting that? What does that look like?
I wanna mention that the state part of it, we still have to have in place.
Absolutely, but the only thing that we can control are those three things.
Well, this, yeah, the playground equipment and other parks that have, that share sports stuff, all that's still closed.
Well, we didn't, we didn't state that, I'm gonna get to that, too, but we closed parks with playground equipment, we closed the pier, and we closed the Rose Garden area and the North Beach Park. And we can control that even now. I mean, we didn't have to put that, that's not part of the stay-at-home order.
Yeah, I just started talking, is it, we're gonna go in?
Yes, sir.
You gotta order.
You know, I've heard the same thing the mayor mentioned earlier, that Governor Ivey is gonna give an update on opening the state back up tomorrow at 11:00. And so I'm not sure, I guess we can handle it one of two ways, in my mind. We can, we can enter some resolution tonight that says, absent some extension by the governor, any restriction, you know, formally entered by the council will expire on April 30th at 5:00 p.m. Or we could wait and see what the governor's report is tomorrow, and what the phased plan for the entire state is, and then potentially come back and have a special meeting tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday, and then have a resolution then to address what the governor has said in that, that press conference tomorrow. You know, my personal hope is that we open things back up, similarly to what's been recommended by the task force. And it sounds from the mayor that that's sort of a plan that our directors have sort of put together already for the city to phase that open in different areas. I'd like to see what the director's plan is, to see how it fits with what the governor's task force plan is, to make sure that there's enough common ground in there to make it work for, for Fairhope. But that's just, you know, my thought is whether we put something on the books tonight, or whether we wait and see what the governor says tomorrow, and come back tomorrow afternoon or the next day to do something.
Well, just remember, we don't have to take action on anything that the governor, because we've just been under the state's stay-at-home orders. We have no stay-at-home, and that, that applies to businesses that are closed. We've, we've not closed businesses. Everything that's, that's, other than those three things, is, is subject to the state authority.
Yeah, that's right. But for, but for the things that we did in two meetings ago, we did not say expires April 30th. I think we said until further notice, maybe. So we would have to take action to, to open those things, and that's kinda what I'm thinking is, do we wanna do it? I mean, there was a lot of discussion about the beach, and whether our beach was under the governor's order, or if hers expires, ours still does, and North Beach will still be closed. Do we wanna go ahead and take care of that tonight?
You could do a contingency, yeah.
Yeah, in the event she opens things back up, or would we rather, would it be more prudent to wait until after her press conference in order for us to put something in place? That's my only. I think those are our options. I think it's, truthfully, it's probably more prudent to wait and see what she does, so that we don't, you know, put something, say something tonight, and then come back and change it tomorrow if it's not. But I, but I think it works either way, as long as you put a contingency in there upon the decisions made by the governor, to the extent they conflict with what we've already done.
I'd rather, I think I'd rather follow suit with what the state's doing, if we wanna preemptively say that, you know, if the state's willing to open things up, those three areas that we have righted out, I'm good with opening those up, if the state's opening everything else up. I think we ought to fall in line with them. And if we wanna set that preemptively now to just carry in, without having to have another meeting, that's fine. But I wouldn't be in favor of opening up in advance of the state.
Councilman Brown?
Probably safest thing to do is just have a special meeting after the, you know, press conference tomorrow, just so we don't, like Jay said, have to come back in here and correct something we did tonight. I'm fine with opening it back up, but.
Well, unless she further took action to close things, we could open those up. We're not, those are not subject to the current state orders, that's, that's all I'm saying. And I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just saying that I, you know, that it may be prudent to wait, just because, you know, if it was to go the other way, and, and, you know, 'cause they could enforce things, they could say.
They could keep the beaches closing tonight, we open our beach, and then.
Yeah.
Everybody's here.
We've got spring break.
That's the one, that's the one that might be contingent upon the state. The others, though, are not, as it stands now.
Right.
I think the playground equipment might be, though, so that, that might be the same.
I think we had to issue that, because if we, we wouldn't have had to pass that if it was subject to the state, state shelter-in-place order. We wouldn't have had to pass it, it would've been a moot point.
Yeah, but I think the shelter, the more finite shelter-in-place order came, came out after we did ours.
Okay, yeah, that might be. All right.
Well, I don't feel it's prudent to do anything tonight. And number two, the main reason we have to set these orders in, I think, is when people don't do what they're supposed to do. We could, we could turn this all over tomorrow, open it all up, do everything we want, everybody get together, cases start rising, you're gonna shut it all down again. So it doesn't, to me, it doesn't really matter what we do. If the people decide not to do responsible actions, we're gonna have a problem again. So I think, in saying that, you know, people can do what they wanna do, but I think it's be prudent to wait and see what's gonna happen with the governor's decision.
I can, I can go along with that. I can, I can wait, and, I mean, it doesn't have to be even tomorrow. In fact, if it's tomorrow, it's gonna have to be tomorrow evening, even if it's a short meeting. But, you know, I can wait, and we don't have to make a decision. I would like to comment, though, that when we passed the resolution that closing our parks with playground equipment and the pier and the North Beach, we specifically mentioned leaving open the golf course, and the golf course has been closed. And, and I don't really know how, how that's possible, when we absolutely specifically stated it be open, and we've had, I've had absolutely tons of people contacting me, asking when it's gonna be reopened, when, when we, we left it open with certain terms. And I think that there are numerous ways in which to open Quail Creek. in which to open Quail Creek and mitigate the risk, as golf courses everywhere are doing. And, you know, I don't think it's irresponsible to do that. I think that the vast majority of people that have asked me about it have been, you know, in their seventies and many even in their eighties, and they want to open it up. And I think that we should open, and if the employees are fearful, you know, I think that we could find some other people to work temporarily, other city employees, maybe. But, you know, we did not close that course. In fact, we specifically.
I want to speak to that, since you are.
I know, Mayor, and I don't think that you had the authority to close that course.
I will say that y'all have had the opportunity for three weeks to reopen it, but you'd rather just complain about me.
Mayor, I have the floor. I, this council.
I'm going to say something if you're going to accuse me of something. You've had the ability to reopen this whole time, and you haven't.
May I finish? There's no action that needed to be taken to open a course when we specifically had already taken the action to leave it open. We don't, we didn't need to undo anything or pass anything to leave it open. We already, go back and look at the minutes, specifically stated that it was to remain open.
I have an email that said, put it on the council agenda and vote for it. You didn't do that.
We don't need to vote for something that had already been decided.
It doesn't matter. They, I told my people not to open it up, and I announced that. If you wanted to reverse it, you should have just put it on the agenda. The reason you didn't is because you like just blaming it on me and not having to make a decision.
Mayor, you know, I knew it was going to come to this. I've put it off forever. I didn't want to have this fight with you, is why we didn't say anything.
But you could have voted to open it back up. It's not a fight.
We had already had the decision made. We, it was in the minutes.
Add it now then. Add it tonight.
I will add it right now. I want to amend, I will make a motion to amend the agenda, to pass a resolution to open up Quail Creek on May the 2nd. That'd be Saturday. With mitigation efforts, and I could work with Ms. Mazur about that, on how to make it safe for everyone. So I want to amend the agenda. I'll make the motion. Pass that down to Jay.
I second. Well, I'll make the motion. You either.
No, I made it.
I second. Now, my question is, if we pass it again, will the mayor close it again?
No, I'll let it ride. All the people that called me and were so concerned about senior citizens, most of the people that are out there are at risk. They were congregating. We've, police have been breaking up congregations at Rock Creek. I mean, I'm trying to do what's right and try to keep people healthy. Y'all are bending the rules.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
They want to play and they're senior citizens. That's fine. That will be your decision. But the fact that you haven't done it before now, y'all could have done this three weeks ago.
All right. Well, we've got a motion and a second to amend the agenda, amend the agenda to add opening of Rock Creek, or Quail Creek, I'm sorry, on May the 2nd. Does that just include the course, or does that include the restaurant facility? Does it include the deck? Does that include?
I would, I would like to amend my motion to say that that would, to include golfing, that would include the use of golf carts by members and non-members, not just to walkers. I would say that the restaurant would remain closed at this time. And I don't know, can you give me the leeway to work with Lynn on the beverage service? I don't know if that's possible.
You would need to ask me if you can work with Lynn, and that would be fine, but that is something that I would do.
I can get council to take that action. I don't, I don't need your permission for that.
That is ridiculous.
So I've got a motion and a second to open.
No, it's not.
Quail Creek on May 2nd. And obviously, I think anything that we would consider would have to fall in line with whatever's already in place statewide for the safe operation of golf courses, which I think is already being implemented in local courses around here, Lakewood and Rock Creek, for example. But with those stipulations in place, Lisa, do I need to, need to call place by place to amend at the agenda, or just general?
Just all in favor.
Okay. All those in favor of amending the agenda to add this item, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. That item has been added.
Okay. Where are we at on council comments, clerk? Is that it?
Yeah, that's volume.
Okay. I will, I will close council comments, and we'll move on to agenda item four. I'm going to add that resolution as agenda item 12. Executive session would be 13, adjournment would be 14. Okay. Item four is a final adoption of an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 1565 and to establish a vote counting devices for use in all municipal elections. I believe this was introduced at the last council meeting, and it's just establishing the make and model of the voting machine to be used. Would y'all like the clerk to expand on that?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item five is an ordinance of annexation of James Lloyd Thomas and Diane Starance Thomas property located at 23545 Second Street in Fairhope, Alabama. And you see the tax parcel there. They've requested to be annexed into the city. Would somebody introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Ordinance has been introduced. Clerk, do you know of any reason that that's pressing matter there to get in residency in any time for an election or anything like that?
There's no rush.
Okay. All right. Counsel, if it's okay, we'll just let this lay over for consideration to next meeting? Okay. Item number six is a resolution to city council amends resolution number 3680-20 by adding the following for public hearings. All public hearings of the city council, planning commission, and board of adjustments and appeals are postponed until further notice, and very importantly, unless the public hearings entail essential minimum functions. Counsel, if you'll let me elaborate a little bit. Give you a few examples between, a distinction between essential and nonessential. The proposed zoning amendment regarding Greeno Load Overlake District was originally advertised for the April the 13th meeting. As advised by the League of Municipalities, that's a nonessential meeting. I mean, that's something that's proposed by, by our own government and our staff, and so that would not be essential. There also would be, hang on just a minute, I've got, I've got some notes here. We will continue to postpone that until such time a public hearings can be, can be held. There was a case for tonight, zoning case 20.02, advertised to be on tonight's agenda that require a public hearing. It does meet the criteria for essential business, as advised by the League of Municipalities. However, our resolution had stated that a public hearing would not be held until we made an announcement during a council meeting. Therefore, the zoning case 20.02 will be moved to the May 11th council meeting. And it says there will be an opportunity for the public to participate by computer or phone, and we're working on detailed instructions for that as well. And finally, another example is, the planning commission will hold a virtual meeting on Monday, May the 4th, that will include quite a few public hearings. We talked about this at length. I talked to the chairman of planning and zoning. We talked to the clerk. We talked to the city attorney. And it's because they meet these requirements for essential business that these need to be held. And I have some specific language from the Alabama League of Municipalities, and this is a great, it's a great little frequently asked question page, and I can get copies of this made for everybody. One of the questions was, when may a government entity hold meetings via electronic means? And the second, the part B of that says, matters that are necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the governmental body, and that is, they must allow members to hear one another at the same time. There must be minutes given, no less than 12 hours after the meeting. Summary must be posted. And then another question was, what constitutes essential minimum functions? And when it, when you talk in terms of a council or a planning commission, it says that termination is more difficult. Questions to ask include, is this action needed to keep the entity's services or operations going? You know, for some hearings, I don't think it's essential to keep the entity's services or operations going. Think you could make that argument. But the second question is, if this action is not taken, is there a reasonable likelihood that the entity or those it serves suffers prejudice, harm, or failure to meet an existing obligations? If the answers to these questions are yes, then it is reasonable that the action constitutes an essential minimum function. And it is visable that the entity reflect those findings in its minutes. So I know that there is an agenda item coming up on May the 4th on P&Z in which the, both parties would fail to meet an existing obligation, which was the closing of the property. So when you get into that, it's kind of hard to pick and choose which, you know, which do you have hearings for and which not. You can't say, well, I don't want to have a public hearing on that right now, because if they tell you that it's going to harm them, or they're not going to be able to meet a deadline, then you have to have the hearing. Did I cover that properly?
You did.
So we need to amend our resolution, and then if you look at the resolution, you tab six, the third paragraph, it says, where is it a desirous of the city council to amend this resolution to add the following after the words with further notice, the words further notice, unless the public hearings entail essential minimum functions. And then the last paragraph is, be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, that due to the limitations on public gatherings and social distancing protocol pursuant to the advisement of the Alabama Department of Public Health and orders of the governor, all public hearings of the city council, planning commission, and board of adjustments and appeals are postponed until further notice, unless the public hearings entail essential minimum functions. Prior to resuming public hearings, an announcement will be made by the city council at a future meeting. Questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item seven is a resolution to authorize the submission of an FY 2021 transportation alternative set aside program grant to the Alabama Department of Transportation to construct new sidewalk facilities along Fairwood Boulevard and Blue Island Avenue. Total project cost is estimated at $500,373.63. The city will be responsible for providing 20% or $100,074.73. Do we have Mr. Johnson here, or anyone to expand on this? I believe this has been brought up before the work session. I think that we were, you know, all in favor of moving this forward. We all agreed it was a great place to put in the sidewalks. And so is that going to suffice, or do we, do we need to get him in here? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass this resolution. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Item eight is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to inform and submit the municipal water pollution prevention program report for 2019 through the Department of Environmental Management. Get a motion to pass this resolution, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Item nine is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute change order number four to Goodwin Mills Kaywood and project number AMOB 170026, Fairhope Library Envelope repairs with deduction from the contract in the amount of $17,472.04, and award the change order to M.W. Rogers Construction. The deduction change order reduces the total contract price from $1,019,950 to $993,477.96. Included the following interest tunnels refund of $6,150, a unit prices refund of $7,578.04, and an ADI 30 roofing demolition, demolition refund of $3,744. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the change order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 10 is a resolution. City council hereby approves and amends the Fairhope docks license and lease agreement for dockage space as presented in the attachment. And I'll try to explain this. So what has been happening is, people have been going to our marina and putting down a $100 deposit for a future arrival. And when they don't show up, they just come in and get a refund, and we've been giving them the $100 refund. The problem is, we have a lot of, a lot of people desire to be in the marina now, a lot of demand, and they're tying down these slips when other people could be renting them. And so Ms. Mazur has asked that we modify this to have a, put in a deposit, and I believe that is a prorated deposit of, if you come in on the 20th of the month, you just pay the 10 days' rent, and then the next month's rent. And if you back out, you lose your deposit. Therefore, you get interested parties, and I think that's very common in the business to do that. That is basically, did I get that right? Jay? I believe when I spoke to Ms. Mazur, she said she had spoken to me as well. Okay.
What about these two items where it's showing, like this, like this is a working document, where it's got the last couple sentences where you've got a few scratched out?
Yeah, that had been, that had been lined out previously in a previous adoption. That is not part of the change. It, it does make, your eyes do get tuned into that, but that's not, that's not the, the change.
Okay.
I think at the bottom of the document, I think on the bottom of the document, she explains.
In the event the owner does not show up, utilize a slip neither the first month, prorated month, nor the deposit fees are refundable. Yeah. Thank you, clerk. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to resol.
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second to approve and amend the Fairhope docks license and lease agreement for dockage space? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Number 11 is a request of Bryant Wheelan, executive director of East Shore Art Center, requesting permission to close Oak Street between Bancroft and Section Streets on May 14th, 2020, between 5:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. for their white linen night fundraising event and to serve alcohol at the event. The street closure is contingent on the governor's order being lifted. So there's a contingency. Is that contingency good enough for this, clerk? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in, I'm sorry, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, next item was a resolution to reopen Quail Creek Golf Course. Would you like the clerk to read that resolution?
Marcus Root.
Marcus, you have it. Okay.
Good luck.
I've seen worse. Okay, resolution reads, the governing body of the city of Fairhope hereby resolves to open Quail Creek Golf Course to members and non-members on May 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 a.m. The restaurant shall remain closed pursuant to the state mandate until further state orders opens said facility. Quail Creek shall adhere to the local PGA. Approved social distancing protocols currently in place, including the use of golf carts. Drink carts shall be made available using current social distancing measures in place at other local golf courses. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Executive session, I'll read the letter from the city attorney. Says, as city attorney Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on section 36-25A7A3 to discuss pending litigation and possible settlement options regarding said pending litigation. City attorney McDowell does hereby declare that the city council of the city of Fairhope rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, April 27, 2020, to go into executive session. City council shall be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. At the end of the executive session, city council shall return to the council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting. The time is 7:13 p.m. City council exits the dais to go into executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.